Okay, here's one change to the agenda. Number seven, the director had a fine meeting. Unfortunately, this family was in emergency. And I think that the show and the shows can take care of it anyway. I'm sure so. You can leave number seven off the agenda.
Motion to approve as amended. I never got a motion button, so.
We don't have a pitch.
Don't have anything to do?
Thank you. I have a prayer from Commissioner Odom and a pledge from Commissioner Yan.
It's not working.
It's not. It's not working. I logged out and logged back in and it gave me the option.
Sorry.
I think it's just out of sync.
I don't know who can vote and who can't.
Yeah, it takes a second. It's being weird.
This is for the agenda approval meeting. Nancy Brown. David Nguyen. Jill Nguyen.
Yes.
Bradley Johnson.
Yes.
Lee Burrow.
Yes.
Andy Odom.
Yes.
Andy Deal.
Yes.
Jerry Prophet's not here. Charlene Thomas.
Yes.
Donnie Cable.
Yes.
Bow your heads, we'll have prayer. Lord Jesus, we just thank you so much for your many blessings, Lord. I thank you for allowing us all to get through our day and to meet together tonight, Lord, in hopes of making the right decisions for our county, Lord, and for our citizens, Lord. We pray for each one of the families and our homes that are still affected here in our county. And as they're still went through some rough times this past week with the anniversary, Lord, I just pray for their anxiety. I pray for their hearts to mend, Lord, and for all of the things that they are still doing without, Lord, that you just help them not only recover what that is, Lord, but just be with their hearts and their minds, Lord. And I pray for each commissioner here, each leader that is here, Lord Jesus, that what everything, everything that we do, Lord God, that we first honor you and, Lord, that we then show respect to each other. Lord, as we move forward tonight in these decisions, I pray that you lead and guide us and I pray that you just speak to our hearts and know what is the right thing to do and let it solely based on that decision, not about any other reasons. And, Lord, I just thank you and I pray to you for all these things in your name, I pray. Amen.
Attention, pledge, salute. I pledge.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice pro.
It's so good to see all of you again. I'd like all of you just to take a moment and realize where you were as a county one year ago today. One year ago today, I arrived in this county, started looking around, started trying to figure out where to start and try to help you guys. Just so you know, I want to give you a little bit of a timeline over the last year of what we have been able to accomplish. So you'll see that and then I'll give the disaster update at the end. On October 4th is when this committee signed the contract with Charles to help or administrate the cost. On October 5th, the National Guard was here, having the National Guard here saving this county about $450,000 for debris efforts. They were here for over 35 days. They were managing debris efforts between this county and search and rescue from the other counties. They were not here moving the debris. We have a huge, huge remembrance of the National Guard when they did this county. If you ever run into the National Guard, please tell them thank you because they really did a lot for you guys. On October 6th, the Highway Department started picking up debris. They started picking up debris the correct way, the FEMA way. They had it documented, they had pictures, they had load tickets. They had never done this before to this scale. So it was a huge, huge undertaking for them to get educated in 48 hours on how to pick up FEMA debris and pick it up and have it documented where we can get it reimbursed. On October 7th, the NRS showed up and we had a meeting with them. They usually don't show up till about 90 to 100 days after an event. They showed up on October 7th. That was literally seven, eight days. The debris had not even begun to be moved. They showed up and did their job before they were asked to get here. They called me and wanted to get here as quick as they could to help you guys, understanding that their work had to be done first before any road work could happen. So that was a lot that happened. On October 7th, we started negotiations and started working with your attorney to get the debris bids and the debris monitoring bids out. October 17th, they were awarded. From October to February 24th, we were in full debris mode. We had Highway picking up bits and pieces and doing what they needed to do, pulling debris off the bridges so we could go in and estimate the damage on a bridge. It was a lot of work in that first month. And like I said earlier, this was work that your Highway Department had not done to this scale. So when you see your Highway Department guys out there, buy 'em a drink, buy 'em a Poga water or soda, you tell them thank you.
Next take.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm telling you, this was something that they had.
To stop, retrain, relearn and do things to a different level. And it's like 100 times harder trying to learn in the middle of a disaster. They didn't have any pre-knowledge or nobody came in and did, hey, let's do a test run on paper and let's see how you work with debris. That hadn't happened. So it was a lot to learn in a short period of time while your county is in a disaster zone at that moment. So I really appreciate everything you've done, Shannon, for the last year. You've done an amazing job and I appreciate it.
You've learned a lot.
Yeah, you have learned a lot. Amen. Yes, yes.
We also had temporary debris staging sites. We had to get those all approved through TAC and permitted so we could stage debris all throughout the county. We had one at the landfill, we had one at Hampton High School, one in Elk Mills and one in Rome Mountain. So managing those temporary sites and getting everything to them, running the trucks, running the National Guard, helping the Highway, taking all of that information in and pushing it up to TMA. The debris had to get TMA numbers, weekly numbers of how much debris you had and where you moved it from. All of this had to be documented weekly while we were in full-fledged debris mode. On February 24th is when we ended the debris and released the debris contractors. That was in the middle of winter, big time. It was wet. These debris contractors had never hauled debris in snow. This was a first for them. They're used to the southeast, south-southeast, Florida, Georgia. They don't usually haul debris in the mountains. They had no idea that they had to have a small truck to get up these mountain roads and hand load and pull it down to a bigger truck. So this was a new, a new movement for a lot of debris contractors to learn this. So, but we worked through it, we worked and got everything done, everything documented. And when I tell you there is tens of thousands of load tickets, pictures, forms, sun and sheets, there's probably for one load ticket about five additional things that go with one load ticket. And they were hauling a lot, a lot during that time. So we're very happy to finish up with the debris in February. That was a month before FEMA drew the line in the sand and said all debris has to end by March 25th, I believe. We were a month ahead of that. So that was an amazing accomplishment. And like I said, we had ice, sleet, snow, all of the above while we were hauling this debris. Go back to October. On October 22nd, we had our FEMA applicant briefing. This is where FEMA and TMA came in and sat down, not only with the county, they also sat down with the city, the power companies, the water companies, any entity that needed to file a FEMA claim on a public assistance level, not a private, private level or individual level. This was all for the public. When we held the applicant briefing, this was 27 days after the event before FEMA got here. So there was a lot of decisions that had to be made before FEMA even got here. So all of those decisions were based on FEMA policy and FEMA procedures, procurement policies. We had to make a lot of purchases in a short amount of time and we had to find it within FEMA policy to back up that purchase. So it was a lot. And I commend your finance department and your mayor because they had not had to execute a PO system to this nature. Nobody had an idea of, okay, now we're going to hand-ride them, okay? Then what do we do? And how do we get this done? Are we doing weekly commission meetings so everybody knows what's going on? There's a lot of changes during October and November. So I really appreciate everything that your finance department did on the front end. Never having been in a storm, never had to document things to this level. And for the mayor stepping up and saying, yes, this is what we have to get done. I will sign it, I will move it. We're under a state of emergency. This has to happen. So thank you to y'all for doing that. I appreciate it.
On November 6th, moving right along.
TMA hired their own consulting company, ACDC, and that was our first introduction to them because TMA needed more resources for this magnitude of a storm. In November, right after that, we realized that the temporary bridges that were in place were not going to make it through the winter. And so that had to be done. Legally, we checked with the attorney, made sure that the county would be responsible for these temporary bridges. Then we started looking for temporary bridges in the middle of a storm, looking for temporary bridges every days after an event for seven states that were affected. It was not an easy task. We pulled the National Guard in, we asked them, how can you help? What can you do? Do you have a Bailey Bridge? Yes, we have one, but it can't make the switchbacks. But we don't have a way to deliver it, said Elk Mills. Not an option. So it was a lot. So the only Bailey Bridge that was available was in Georgia, I believe, and it was already spoken for. So finding the temporary bridges was a feat of its own. Then explaining to FEMA why we had to have these temporary bridges. For everything we have done, there has been a narrative worked for every purchase, for every employee that worked, for daily and hourly, there has been documentation for the entire Sheriff Department, the EMA Department, finance, planning, the landfill, everything had to be documented and approved and have a narrative beside it, explaining what they were doing. That's how FEMA uses their backup documentation to justify obligating that project and pushing the funds to the county. So there was a lot going on in November. December, December, we're still in debris. We realized in December that FEMA had new guidance that came out in October for waterway debris removal. With the waterway debris removal, I was not confident that we could apply and get that waterway debris approved with FEMA. It was a huge risk after the new guidance came out in October. I was not comfortable with that. The mayor and I sat down, TMA sat down, finance sat down, and we started asking, how can the state help? Your mayor went to the governor and explained the entirety of the waterway situation. If we, as Carter County, would have picked that debris up out of the water and we did it and we paid for it, the county above us didn't do it. And now, eight, nine, 10 weeks later, we're having to do it again. This had to be a cohesive effort for every county involved and had to be done to stay well. 77 days after we reached out and asked for help, it was a 77-day week where we were out taking pictures. First of all, we had to get the NRCS to say that this debris was not eligible. We had walked 53 miles of your waterways here and pictured and documented everything that was in the waterways. NRCS came back and said, 1,100 feet, we can pick up debris in 1,100 feet. But by the time we get it approved, it's going to be washed down. It won't even be here. It will be on down, further down, and we'll have to be chasing debris to try to find it, to pick it up. So NRCS was not an option. That's when FEMA and TMA stepped in and said, now we have their denial, we are able to move forward. And the state took that responsibility and risk. With the amount that was picked up out of your waterways, 300,000, just over 300,000 cubic yards, that would have cost this county $19 million in waterway debris. So I really, really appreciate TMA taking the time, the effort and the energy and working with every county that was involved and stepping up to the plate and helping each county with that. So thank you, TMA. Thank you, thank you. Moving on along, in December, we had the RFPs go out for engineering for Poga 1, Poga 2 and Long Hollow. Once we got the engineering RFPs out, they were due to end in August, September, August, I believe it was eight months, August. That has ended. The engineering is done, they are justifying and solidifying the contracts. The contracts will be going out to bid within a week or two from now. So we will have all of that. And that's a massive undertaking. When you put an RFP out for a bridge rebuild with engineering, you're looking at about 265 pages. Then you're going to have that many pages of a response coming in, whoever bids on this. So when they bring these RFPs in, they're in a three-ring binder, they can't afford to ship them because it's a lot. So they bring them here and stack them and receive them in finance as they come in. It is an entire day or two days to sit there and go through and check over 200 things that needed to be in that RFP for their response. And that's coming up. That's going to happen really, really soon. Long Hollow is out, we have question and answers coming up here in just a week. And then the award was on the 22nd? 22nd. Or it might be a little bit later, I'm not sure, I've checked the dates. But all of that has happened. All of that work has happened and every department in this county has worked extremely hard. And this is not their normal job. They've had to go, they still have county road work to do. This is above. This is, they still have the same amount of people as they did when the storm hit. This is above and beyond their normal scope. What they thought 2025 was going to look like was not this on paper. This is above and beyond their normal scope of work. So it's a lot. In December, January, we had the state of emergency ended for Carter County, January 28th. Then again, the purchasing and the finance department had to step back in and go back and retake the role that they had before the storm and still approve every single thing that was coming in. This was a massive amount of paperwork for them to have to take in, itemize it, bring it to finance budget in the commission to get approved. It was a lot. In May, Governor Lee and TMA identified the 120 days. The 120 days is where they set a starting date with these 120 days out of 280, I believe, maybe more. But they had to have 120 days where everything is fully reimbursable at 100%. Amazing. We strategically placed all of the debris, nickels and dimes on the front and back end, the temporary bridge, the sheriff's outpost, anything that we had to purchase in that 120 days so we strategically could get 100% reimbursement back. They didn't set that until May. So we had to go in and figure out when there was going to be 120 days where we were going to be covered either this way or that way. And Carolyn and I had to go back to all of our projects and we had to separate out the debris. What's 100%? What's 75%? And that B Sheriff outpost, what's 100? What's 75? All of our emergency protective measures, 175. The temporary road work done by the Highway, 175. We were not able to do that until May, June after everything had already happened. And we had already captured everything, we just had to go back and split it. So that was a massive undertaking as well. While we're talking about the temporary debris or the temporary road work, your Highway Department went out and fixed and documented, FEMA documented the temporary work that they did. So if they had to go out and add riprap, fix a culvert, whatever they had to do to stabilize that road, they did about $600,000 worth of work in about three months. All of that is documented and on paper and submitted to FEMA within its own project. So all of the calls for the labor, the equipment that took out there hourly, and any materials that were purchased, that's where that about $600,000 comes from. And that's an estimate for that. Give you an idea of that. So January, February, March, debris, analyzing the CAPB, separating all the project, the RFPs, the engineering, the temporary bridge, oh, and we got Heald's project approved. So we were able to borrow the $8 million from, I think $7 million, $7 million, borrow $7 million from the state of Tennessee for our debris efforts. That means we had to jump through every single PDAM program and document everything to justify them releasing that $7 million to Carter County, which had never been done in the state of Tennessee. This was a first time. Getting to the roads. While we're on the roads, we had over 250 sites. This meant that I had one person on the Charles team that did nothing but for 100 days, drive every single road, stop every 10 feet, get the length, the width, the depth, the culvert, the size, everything that was damaged on that site, spray paint on the side of the road, the site number, take all the pictures, come back, sit down with Highway at the end of the day and said, how long do you need to fix this? Six hours, eight hours, 12 hours, three days, two weeks? Listen, how many people do you need? Two, four, five, 10? How many materials were you need? That's what we had to submit to FEMA. So 250 sites, length, width, depth, hours, equipment, materials for 256 sites. That's what we submitted to FEMA in road groups so that FEMA could see a cost estimate, what we're estimating for each site, and FEMA could send a site inspector out. FEMA has to send a site inspector out if the work has not been completed. FEMA sent out site inspections. They had one to seven site inspections a week for five months. We completely kept the site inspection team extremely busy. They were here two or three days a week for five months. It was a lot. Let's see. Getting on to January, February, March. March is when we had to go in and document everything that we had on paper for the Road Department and provided to Ms. Carolyn for the loan. They didn't just say, okay, here's a loan. There was a stack of backup paperwork that Ms. Carolyn had to provide to the loan agency in order for the county to qualify for that. So we based that on everything we had done and submitted to FEMA. As of right now, I have one employee, Lori, that is staffed completely and solely at the Highway Department. She's there Monday through Friday, even though the Highway Department doesn't work on Fridays. She is still in the building and still working. And she has been doing that for about three months, I believe.
Close to it.
Close to three months, yes. And we still have about three months to go. And she has a hazard mitigation FEMA specialist that is with her two days a week. And she has our PDMG, a program delivery manager, that is with her two days a week. That's, that's just for the roads. The hazard mitigation specialist that has come here, I feel like I need to explain a little bit of this, I know this is a lot, but the hazard mitigation specialist on our 256 sites, if we have one site that had one small culvert that was 40 feet long and 18 inches wide, well now, maybe we should have a bigger, better culvert. Well, in order to get a bigger, better culvert and upsize, FEMA allows you so much of your project as mitigation money. So they will say, hey, anything you do to make this site more resilient to the next disaster, we're going to pay for. So upsizing a culvert qualifies as that. The problem is, if you're in Rome Mountain and you upsize one culvert, you've got nine culverts down the hill. So you can't just change one culvert. You have to have an H&amp;H study, an engineer come out, address every single one of those culverts. We explain it to FEMA. FEMA writes up our hazard mitigation opportunity and provides it back and says, you qualify for nine culverts now that you've provided all of this. So it's a lot. Since they have started the hazard mitigation on our sites here, we now have 1.2 million that is at FEMA for hazard mitigation, but we're looking close to 2.7 million that they will be making your infrastructure beater, better, stronger, more resilient, so you will be in a better place. Because the last thing we want to do is go back and say, oh, the road got cracked, let's pave it. No, the road got cracked for a reason. Was it the culvert? Was it the water? Were we doing more bank stabilization? There was a reason. So your county is going to be stronger and have a very strong infrastructure when we are completed. That I can assure you. Shannon, I'm sure you can back me up on that.
Yeah, I'd like to say one thing, fit button for Lori and Cheryl. I can't think of the others I can put in part. Yeah, there's mitigation. I wouldn't have no idea if we're going to get that to run out to any meeting, if they have found for us.
Yeah, yeah, just to make, that you already qualified for by having the event and having more money done on top of that specific site. Absolutely, absolutely. Let's go back to the NRCS a minute. When the NRCS got here on October 24th... When the NRCS got here on October 7th, the mayor signed a request for emergency watershed program on, on October 8th. Less than two weeks from when this event happened. When they sat down and met with us at the USDA office here in Carter County with the highway department and with the mayor, there's only 75% cost share available for this program. Meaning the other 25% is on the county. Let me tell you, when we were sitting there that week, we were looking at paying for debris. We're looking at paying for debris on the waterway. We don't even know on October 7th how many sites we have for the highway. But it was a lot. It was an extreme amount. I think I estimated the first two weeks I had to turn in an estimate to FEMA for all damages in the county, including the power, the water, the schools, all the different entities, the cities, the volunteer fire departments. And we did estimate that at $180 million. That is for infrastructure that is publicly owned by a county or a city or entity that can qualify to apply for FEMA. 180. That's not your individual households. That's none of that. That is just the infrastructure. So NRCS sat down with us. We had already walked and documented 53 miles. Another employee, um, went out and took pictures and documented all of the sites. NRCS sat down with us and said, yes, this is 75-25 split. This is what we do. And we just, the mayor and I looked at each other and said, well, then we can't do it because we don't have money to do that kind of thing. We're going to be maxed out so quick with all these other projects. There's no way. And the mayor asked NRCS, can you fund this at 100%? They said, no. We've never done that. And she said, we'll ask. So we provided the USDA with all the documentation where FEMA was going to have a 120 days where it was 100% covered. NRCS based the 100% decision solely for your mayor asking and on the backup documentation we gave them. And they are funding all 52 approved sites at 100%. And they are doing it so well that they are allowing the contractor to send their invoice directly to NRCS. Once that means is once they see it and approve it, we have the copy of the invoice here. They go ahead and release that money immediately. I'm talking seven to 10 days. So where we have the contractors out working on the NRCS sites, we have four out right now. We have, you know, the main areas, we have four different contractors working. And those four areas, I think it was close to 2.4 million that they're covering at 100%. We also wrote the contract with those four contractors to allow us a 60-day window. Meaning once we receive the invoice, we have 60 days. So we have enough time to turn that around. So the county will not give out this money at all. So this was a huge task. And I appreciate your mayor for stepping up and going to fight for this county and asking for that. Because if you don't ask, you don't get it. So I thoroughly appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Let's see. Now we get to the fun stuff. I'm going to go ahead and give you my disaster update now. And I'm not going to categorize it as A, B, C, D, E, F, G like we have been doing. I'm just going to give you an update when, where the projects are at. Right now, we have 42 projects in the portal. There's ones being added. There's ones being taken out constantly. Nine projects have been obligated by FEMA. Nine projects. And that total is $11,357,221.95. Nine projects. When I say obligated by FEMA, that means we have satisfied the federal requirements for them to release the money to FEMA. Once FEMA receives that money and we go through the FEMA process, we are able to draw down that money from FEMA. So we have nine projects obligated by FEMA. We have seven projects pending obligation, meaning it's made it to the final steps and it is waiting for that last signature. We have four projects that we're working through additional mitigation funding, adding more, asking for more.
How many?
Four that we're working for additional mitigation funding. We have 15 projects that we're working with FEMA, the highway, BMA, finance, Lori. We have 15 that we're solidifying all the needed documents to get it through the next step at FEMA. They already have the ground level documents. Then there's another layer of documents that we need to provide to back up those documents. We have 15 of those projects. We have seven projects that are being reviewed by our program delivery manager, our FEMA rep. He has to review them. He is reviewing seven before he pushes on to the CRC. So that gives you an idea. I'll give you a couple of milestones where we're at. Lori and FEMA, um, the mitigation point of contact, like I said, weekly meetings, two to three days. Then she's here in this county working at the highway department just for the hazard mitigation money. Lori has also, um, worked with the PDMG weekly. So we have him set up weekly. Not only do we have our Zoom meeting where everyone's involved, but he comes and sits at the highway department for an entire day and goes through every single project with them. Um, FEMA did approve the late roadway damages for 22 sites that Shannon brought up earlier. We have 17, I think, of those sites on there right now, but they approved 22 sites. When I say late roadway damages, you remember when all these debris trucks were rolling through here? So we didn't have one road in Elk Mills that had damage from the storm, but it could have had damage from these trucks. So that after effect. So this is where the late roadway damages come in. We also have all the site inspections aren't complete unless they come back out and want to see one more thing. And Shannon knows that he's had to send people, go in there, get in your truck. I need you to drive up there and take a picture right now. I need it right now. So he's constantly having someone on the road going to do something right now. And I don't see that ending for a while.
And we'll do it soon.
No, talk soon. Yeah. So that's my disaster remembrance of the last year and where we are today. So if you have any questions, I will be happy to be answered. Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any public?
Let's see, have a comment.
Everybody's buttons there? Okay. Because we'll find out here at the phone.
Uh, just for your information, we did remove a few items, so I'll move through, uh, this just naming the items by designation. Alphabet, if you will. So we'll start with the first item and I'll make a motion to approve payment to landworks, construction contractors for invoice number 20250442 in the amount of $5,600 for the temporary bridge at Pugent.
And a second by Commissioner Lawson. Is there any discussion? Let's vote. Yes.
The voice vote. This does not.
She called your name, Mr. Oakes. He said yes. You said yes, didn't you?
Yes, ma'am.
Steve Burrow?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you. We're down to, uh, 6C if you're looking on the budget committee, uh, agenda. Um, so I'll place an motion to approve payment to landworks, construction contractors for invoice number 20250443 in the amount of $5,600 for the temporary bridge at Pugent.
Second by Commissioner Fraser. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Speaker.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Show me.
No. Sorry about that. Fat finger.
Very rare. Yes. We're in a multimillion dollar operation and $10,000 worth of more.
Charlie Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Fraser?
Thank you. Motion passed.
Okay, we're down to item 60 and I'll make a motion to approve a check request and payment to Shell's paramount services for invoice number 91225 in the amount of $60,905.58.
Second by Commissioner Range. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
We're down now to item 6C and I'll make a motion to approve payment to product products for invoice number 2057 in the amount of $2,900 for your traffic lights.
Okay, the second by Commissioner Thomas Crawford. Is there any discussion?
Can I make?
Yes.
Uh, T-Dog told me the other day, Gat Creek Bridge where these red lights are at are, it is out for bid and this is our first or second week in November this year, like as in next month. So they start, that is in progress. Maybe a while after that. Shouldn't that be out like a whole?
Wait, no. Any other? Oh, yes. Okay, let's vote.
All right, Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Okay, we're down now to 6H and I'll place an motion to approve payment by first construction for application number one in the amount of $504,174.22 for heat branch repairs. This is an NR, uh, C, S project funded by USDA.
Second by Commissioner Kim. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Bradley Johnson?
Yes.
Charlie Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you. We're down now to item 6I. Place an demotion to approve payment to Baker's Construction for application number two in the amount of $296,271.98 for heat and branch repairs. Again, NRCS project funded by USDA.
Second by Commissioner Fraser. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Down now to item 6J. So I place an motion to prove, to approve a check request and payment to Baker's Construction for application number three in the amount of $296,296.75 for heat and branch repairs. Again, this is NRCS, but this one is to be funded or reimbursed via FEMA.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Is there any, is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
So we'll move down to 6K. I'll place an demotion to approve payment to FEMA Construction for invoice number 1815 in the amount of $41,760.60 for NRCS bank stabilization. Again, this is fully funded by USDA.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Is there any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Okay, now we're down to 6L. I'll place an demotion to approve a purchase order for straight path distribution LLC in the amount of $3,720 for drainage replacement pipes for Shell.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Is there any discussion? So.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you. We're now down to 6M. So I'll, um, place an demotion to approve a purchase order for straight path distribution in the amount of $8,535.00 and $0.30 for drainage replacement pipes for Shell.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas? Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Down now to 6N. So I'll place an demotion to approve a purchase order for straight path distribution LLC in the amount of $12,820 for drainage pipes for Shell.
Second by Commissioner Kim. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
We're now down to 6O. I'll place an demotion to approve a purchase order for Summers Taylor's in the amount of $40,000 for asphalt repair to repair County Road damaged by hurricane.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Sterling Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Thank you. We're now down to item 6D. So I'll place an demotion to approve a check request and payment to Summers Taylor for invoice number 40070 in the amount of $140 for calcium or dust control.
Second by Commissioner Fraser. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
We're down to 6Q. So I'll place an demotion to approve a check request and payment to Summers Taylor's for invoice number 202540-1 in the amount of $97,462.00 for Shell Road repairs. And this is a NRCS project.
Second by Commissioner Fraser. Is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Brad Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, motion passed.
Now we're down to 6R. So I'll place an emotion to approve a check request and payment to Summers Taylor for invoice number 202540-2 in the amount of $189,484.43 for Shell Creek road repairs. Again, this is also an NRCS project.
Second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion?
On her amount, she's got a zero, 189, 189,000. She's got a zero added in on that. Should be 189,000.
A little bit more than we wanted.
Yes. Well, I agree.
Somebody's paying attention.
Did you miss that?
Jury, my big brother.
All right, so any other discussion?
Frank Johnson.
I can now vote on my hand now, but yes for.
Thank you, motion passed.
Okay, we're down down to 6S. I'm licensed to motion to approve payment to Summer Taylor for invoice number 652126 in the amount of $14,871.24 for $1,642.97 coming from blood related PO number 9102425136 and $10,228.27 coming from the highway department regular budget.
Second by Commissioner Carlson, is there any discussion? All right, thank you, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Down now to 6X. So I'll place an emotion to approve payment to East Tennessee Steel Supply for invoice number 178670 in the amount of $114.84 for replacement door for the hot box.
Second by Commissioner Brown, is there any discussion? Okay, thank you, let's vote. Motion passed.
We're down now to item 6Y. So I'll place an emotion to approve a check request and payment to Martin Marietta for invoice number 4670, 628,000. In the amount of $2,967.77 for riprap class A1.
Second by Commissioner Cable, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passed, thank you.
We're now down to items 6Z. So I made a motion to approve payment to Martin Marietta for invoice number 46868802 in the amount of $1,456.69 for riprap class B.
Second by Commissioner Range, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
We're now down to item 6AA. So I'll put it, place an emotion to approve payment to PermaPile for invoice number 78469 in the amount of $6,500 for concrete safety barriers.
Second by Commissioner Carlson, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
We're now down to item 6B as in Boyd B. So I'll make a motion to approve a check request and payment to Plumber's Hardware for invoice number 75497 in the amount of $255.00 for drainage pipes.
Second by Commissioner Frazier, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
Now down to 6CC. So I'll place an emotion to approve purchase order to Slade Construction in the amount of $50,000 for shell backed build stuff.
Second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Motion passed.
Now we're down to item 6DD. Place an emotion to approve a check request and payment to ECD Services LLC for invoice number 2.75 in the amount of $12,770.76 for sugar hollow H and H stuff.
Second by Commissioner Brown, is there any discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
I think most everyone was present for the three bids for somebody else won it, could ever be. Side of 6EE. That now will move on down to 6FF, which is the additional meeting, which will occur on November 17.
6EE, we have to vote.
Yeah.
Remember, we had a motion on the floor to advance 500.
Right, right. That's number, that's, okay. I'm sorry, I haven't mislegaled here. So I've got an option to set aside $500,000 of the 400, I mean, the 40 million loan for the highway department. When this is exhausted, Superintendent Merchat will have to request permission through the budget process.
Second by Commissioner Frazier, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
If anybody directs the budget. How are they going to, is there any standard set how they're going to communicate with the finance department as it has been spent? Has it?
Well, we'll do a budget amendment to move the money. And then he'll put in, or Karen can put in the PO, Shannon can approve it. Then it comes to me for approval. We can track it that way in the system so we don't have to do it manually.
We're getting close to audit time, that's why.
So any other discussion? Okay, let's vote. Thank you, motion passed.
My start of the committee is to have a November 6, 2025 special call meeting to address continuing invoices, contracts, et cetera. Somehow particularly the highway.
Second by Commissioner Williams, is there any discussion? I have one thing. If you have it on the six, that only gives you 11 days for those are the weekend days for the next four weeks, is that doable, Dean?
We'll make it work. He's got to get, we've got to get these road repairs done and we've got to get those contracts approved. So we'll make it work.
If you do it between, I mean, October 30, that only gives you 10 days after. I just want to make sure that is enough time in between.
Yeah, that's why I said the six, just because those bids come back on the 22nd. But if there's any additional questions or any delays on that, that gives us a little bit extra time.
Okay. I just want to make sure it was kind of in between, but still. We did weekend, four days, so I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll make it work.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Chair, that's it. I'll just go back.
Please, any additional comments?
Go ahead and get your, go ahead and get your.
Are you sure?
Yep.
I was just going to tell you all, thank you for approving these projects. If you need to see, you know, there's a lot of little ones going on, but the one that I have noticed over the past week or two is a little lady off of Ritter Town on the lower end. If you're coming up on Ready Mart, look over to your right and look over there. That entire section of road was gone, was it not, Shannon?
Ralph, Ralph.
Yes. And I want to see the magnitude of what they're having to do on some of these roads. Go right there and you can see it. It's right there in your face. It's very impressive to watch it, but thank you, guys. I know most of the damage was in our district, towards Hampton Valley Forge area. So we do see it. I appreciate you, you know, just following. If you get a chance, ride by there and look behind the Ready Mart and you will see that whole section was gone. It's in the turn of the river. And, you know, those folks have just been getting in and out the best they could. And they've been patient, they hadn't said a whole lot. It was just like, is it on the list, are they going to fix it? And it's getting fixed and it's looking really good. So if you get a chance, ride by there.
Commissioner Frazier.
I just wanted to let everybody know where the Bassmaster finished out this past weekend. Kid that won it, his name was Tripp Verlinsky. He was from University of North Alabama. And his fishing buddy through at the University of North Alabama was also the finalist. They were the two finalists. Tripp come away with the win and won a check for $7,500. And the kid turned around and donated it back to the United Way for Hurricane Helena for Carter County. So I would encourage you all to go to the Bassmaster website, check it out. I think John, not here, who's gone, he has an article on it as well. The Kids Class Act. All the Bassmaster guys were awesome. All the kids they had out there were great. One of the guys was the underdog and everybody was rooting for him because he didn't use any sonar at all and made it to the top four. So it was a great time. We've got allegedly a few more coming from the NAIA tournaments and a few others that already expressed interest in wanting to come to Watauga and fish. And Tripp's biggest day bag while he was up there off of five fish was 20 pounds and 10 ounces of bass. His two day seeding, his number one was 35 pounds and 13 ounces of bass off of Watauga Lake.
But the lake's dead, didn't you hear it?
Well, you have already put about 500,000 fish in there in the past 10 years. But Tripp is a class act. Recommend if y'all get the opportunity, reach out to Bassmaster and pass along your thanks for Tripp doing that. And so far, it's pulled in about two to three million impressions, depending on which way you look at it, as far as social media goes. One of the videos that I saw of, I think it was Bryce.
It was Bryce.
It was Bryce, had over 60,000 views on it just from his reaction of pulling a fish out of Watauga Lake. So these guys are grounded in faith and have good families and coaches. So it was a whole heck of a lot of fun.
Thank you, Commissioner Frazier, is there any other comments? A couple housekeeping items. Please get your agendas in for your next meetings. And remember, you may vote on chair person or vice chair. Talk to me as detailed as you can when you see those. And the next meeting is. Plan for the October 9th, I'd like to make sure everyone understands that. Is there anyone else? Okay, I'll take it.